And I was going to go ahead and start with the Benson Hill Community Plan. Erica Conklin is here to walk us through it.
Thank you, Chair Corman. I have been waiting awhile to come and talk with you about the Benson Hill Community Plan. So, oops, let's see if I can. There we go. Oh, maybe not quite yet. So, we've been working on the Benson Hill Community Plan for awhile and, let's see. And just a little bit of background about our Benson Hill area. It's about a quarter of the population of our city, a little bit less. So, it's a big chunk of our residents and a couple of different business areas there. So, we've got some business representation in that community as well. There are seven schools. It suffers from a lack of infrastructure. In some areas, it's very well built out with infrastructure and others, it's hardly built out with infrastructure. And we know that we don't have any kind of a community recreation center in that area. About two-thirds of the area of the Benson Hill was annexed in the Big Benson Hill Annexation and there weren't those types of civic amenities there at the time when we annexed. But we do know that there's very strong neighborhoods. The neighborhood associations that were there when the city, that were a longstanding part of the city like Tiffany Park or Rolling Hills, they have great connections with the city. And some of the newer neighborhood associations like Cascade Neighborhood Association, they've really started to hit their stride and they've really got some good things going on. So, they also have a little bit of topography but some great views of the city of Renton, of Maple Valley Highway and the Maple Valley area and Mount Rainier. So, when they were, if you take a look at the area that was annexed, the area that, there's 12 neighborhood associations represented in that area. Most of the neighborhood associations are north of Petrovisky Road. And there's a lot of unorganized areas in the area south of Petrovisky Road. And throughout our presentation and in our plan, we found, when we were conducting our outreach, we found there were a lot of differences between resident opinions north of Petrovisky and south of Petrovisky. If you take a look at the land use in our comprehensive plan, this is what the map looks like. It's primarily residential. Those big purple areas are our commercial areas. The one in the center being the Cascade Village Shopping Center, that has a high rate of vacancy right now. And many people commented that the layout feels unsafe, they don't feel that safe being there. And then we also have the Benson Plaza or where Fred Meyer is the big anchor of that plaza. And it's very auto-oriented, so it doesn't really feel like a central place for people. Some of the other areas that you can see, the brown patches are big multifamily developments. If we take a look at the Puget Sound Regional Council, this area is considered to be an area of very low opportunity. And this was a regional study, as you can see from the map, where they took a look at some different factors like access to education and employment and health. And a bunch of different factors went into their area of opportunity. And the Benson Hill Community Plan comes in, pretty much in the low opportunity area. So, we also know that the area has growing diversity. This is the data on the map from 2000. The darker the color, the larger the population born outside the United States. Now, take a look at what changed in 10 years. So, what we know is the population of people born outside of the US grew from 15 to 23% in 10 years. That's an amazing rate of growth. And we also know that as of the 2010 census, about 7% of the adults don't speak English at all in the households in this area. We also can look at people who are living in or near poverty from the 2010 census and there's some interesting results. It's also interesting to note that it isn't necessarily, when you take a look at these maps side by side, it's not necessarily correlated. So, it's not necessarily the immigrant communities who are coming into this area and living in poverty or people who don't speak English. When you take a look, there's just some real specific and different patterns of demographic patterns in the Benson Hill. When you take a look at parks and recreation, this is a map here from our Parks Recreation Natural Areas Plan. And here's the location of all of our neighborhood and community parks and some walking distances around. And what you'll see again is the areas that had been in the city for a longstanding period of time, in the north part of the Benson Hill Study Area, are pretty well served by parks and recreation. The cities made a good effort at making sure that our community was served. The areas that have been longstanding part of the county before they annexed aren't as well-served. There's some natural areas around the, sort of around the edges of the Benson area such as Renton Park or the Sues Creek Park and Trail, some natural areas there. But there's certainly, there's certainly a deficiency of parks and recreation in this area. And, you know, our highest density area here where these brown areas of multifamily dwellings are, they have no recreation within walking distance. And we find a similar pattern if we look at programmable space, which would be meeting rooms or gathering centers for the community. When we take a look at non-motorized transportation, we can look at our Trails and Bicycle Master Plan and also talking to the community. People love the amount of trails that they have in this area. It's kind of a weird patchwork of trails because some of them are utility corridors or other sort of funny little rights-of-way. And so, but, when you take a look at all the different locations where these things are, it really is quite a network of trails for people to get to and to get around, have a little bit of recreation. So, if we're going to take a look at sort of summarizing our existing conditions, we know that there's some uneven social equity in this community. The neighborhoods are disjointed, especially south of Petrovisky. There's not a lot of focused activity. There aren't gathering spaces, there aren't parks that serve the whole study area. And there's limited non-motorized ability. You can get around on some of the trails through the patchwork, but it is kind of hard to get from place to place unless you're going to get in your car. So, you know, that just sets us up. We knew going into the Benson Plan that some of these conditions existed and it's one of the reasons why the Benson Plan was selected to be our second community plan that we were going to, that we were going to pursue. And we also knew that if we were going to reach a very diverse, a very large and in some ways not very connected community, that we had to do lots of different things to reach them. So, we tried some online activities, including making an interactive website for the Benson Plan. We did a specific person-to-person outreach and I'm just going to show you very quickly one of these videos that we did, really to kick off the Benson Hill here. This is the shortest one. This is where we asked people to describe, oh, three words to describe the Benson Hill Community. Oh. No sound. Oh, those aren't working.
It's muted on your computer, it looks like.
Yeah, I just, oh, wait a second.
Yeah?
Well, I guess we won't watch the video, but I would encourage everyone here to go out and to go to BensonPlan.org and go to what we've heard and take a look at the videos. Because what we found is that by going out to the community in the places where people are already gathering, like our neighborhood picnics or other special events, that was the best way to reach a really broad audience of members of our community. And we had a lot of great interactions with people. I'm sorry that the-
Mr. Chair.
-sound isn't working.
Yes.
Erica, could you just tell us a few of the comments you heard, some of the three words that you've heard people share with you?
Well, a lot of the, a lot of the words that people had to share, people thought their community was peaceful. They thought there were great places or there were a lot of children, it was child-friendly, that there were, it was a great place. One person said, "It's a great place. It's not a snooty place to live and it's not, it's not a degraded place to live, it's just a normal place to live." And he said, and I don't like to use air quotes. That's, it's actually this person who's speaking right now on there. And so, people, the people that we talked about when they used their three words, a lot of the, a lot of the three words were very positive. People on the whole like to live in the Benson Hill Community and, but that doesn't mean that there aren't things that they think couldn't be better or couldn't be improved. And the video that's right above that is where we asked people, "If you could change one thing, what would it be?" And the things that we heard in the summer of 2011, when we, when we started just informally interviewing people, were the same themes that throughout the process came back over and over and over again. We'll talk about those a little bit at the end of the presentation. So, if you haven't, if you haven't seen the videos though, I would encourage you to go on and take a look and see what all, people from all different walks of life in our community had to say about what Benson Hill, about the Benson Hill. So, we tried to provide a lot of updates. So, as we gathered information, we put information out on the web so people know, knew what was going on, what kind of feedback. There were ways that they could interact and leave comments about that. We had a social media strategy with Facebook and get some comments going that way and let people know what's, what's happening. One of the great things is, is that we learned that when we posted things on Facebook or we sent out mailers, we got a lot, a lot more responses on our website. People, so people would hear about it and then they'd go and check it out, which is exactly what we wanted to happen. So, that was good. We also had an interactive map where people could go on and click on the map and then upload pictures or comments. This was great because we heard a lot of things from the community about missing sidewalk links, unsafe intersections and, and all sorts of things. It was very easy to click on a map and say, "This is right where it is." And there were some online discussions. Someone asked, "What about a dog park?" And people said, "Oh, this would be great." And here's, but I have a concern. Would it be fully fenced? Who would keep, who would take care of it? And so, these are the kinds of things that people could talk about in an online community and, you know, maybe these people have never, never met in person, but they could discuss. And we did online surveys. Everything that we did online, we also had an in-person or paper version. So, when we went out to the community, we took a paper copy of the interactive map and people wrote on it in, you know, the old-fashioned way of interactive maps. And, but we tried to make it and I, I don't have the statistics at hand, but a lot of the tools that we used to develop our website kept some statistics of who came to our website and who registered for different things on there. And we reached different pockets of people with all of our different techniques. We also had an open house and the open house was, was very well attended. Let's see. And there we did some visioning and prioritizing and we asked people, you know, "What do you, what do you think? What do you think your vision for Benson Hill is and what would you most like to see improved there?" As I mentioned, we also went to neighborhood picnics, two summers in a row. The second summer, we went back with all of the data we'd gathered before and then we had taken some of the ideas people threw out, talked about them with staff or community stakeholders like the owner of the Cascade Shopping Center. And then we took some scenarios out and said, "What do you think about this one and what do you think about this one?" And gave people a chance to, to give input that way. A lot of informal one-on-one happened at these picnics. And I think this kid here was like so excited that he got to fill out his opinion. We also worked with community services and the Cascade Village Shopping Center and the shopping center hosted a Moonlight movie as part of our citywide program. And we got to do some outreach for the Benson Hill Community Plan at, at that movie. And most of the people there were people that we'd never interacted with before. And another thing that we did is, early on in the process, we knew that we needed people who were leaders from their community to be part of our steering committee. And we needed them, we needed their help to help us reach out into the community, whether it be into neighborhood associations or ethnic communities. And so, we, we developed a steering committee with the help of the, some recommendations from Norma and Wendy of the neighborhood program and also based on people who we talked to in the first set of interviews at the picnics, who seemed interested and engaged. And we got a lot of great insight from our steering committee. And so, we also worked with our interdepartmental team and got input from our city partners about what, you know, what should be in the plan and how do we make these ideas work? Oops, I clicked too many times. Okay, I don't know why it's doing that. So, the sum of that year and a half of outreach brought us to developing a draft community plan. And when we look at the top, the top ideas, what people wanted in the vision most of all was to create a focus or a heart of the community there. They also wanted to connect neighborhoods and connect in the physical way, meaning let's have sidewalks and streets where we can, we can move on them, but also connect in the social way. And lots of things about improving the community of neighborhoods through parks and recreation, through safety improvements and through creating a strong vibrant community. So, when, some ideas about creating focus in the short term came up and these are, these were intended to be quick wins. What could we do with a little bit of money and a lot of elbow grease to create something that attracted people and brought people together in the community? The two ideas that came out of that would be a dog park or a community garden. This shows the Cascade Village as a potential location for those. The property owner is willing to work with the community on that. The Cascade Neighborhood Association has been working on a dog park. They've hit some obstacles with insurance and things, but they're, they're still pushing ahead with their proposal. A community garden could be there or someplace else. But what, what can we do in the short term to attract some people and create a focus in the neighborhood? Also, what could we do in the long term? And we heard some different ideas. One of the most popular ideas was, "Let's just take the whole Cascade Village and turn it into that great central park that the community needs, right in the heart of where there's an underserved area in our parks area, right in the heart of where there's some high-density housing that doesn't have access to recreational amenities." But there were also some ideas about what can we do to bring economic development back into the shopping center. Connecting neighborhoods, 116th is really the only major north-south connector in that neighborhood and it has to do with topography. There's also Benson Highway that skirts kind of the edge of the area. But if you really want to connect the neighborhoods, then 116th really needs to be the pathway that connects people together. And so, there's some ideas about what we can do to 116th to improve it. The standards vary tremendously as you move north to south. And, you know, another, another option for connecting was, how do we connect up these small linkages and these informal trails into a long-term trail system that can get us from place to place? And so, there's some ideas about what, what we could do with existing paths and to create larger corridors. And that's not without its obstacles. A lot of those rights-of-way, the city doesn't really have access to do, access to make improvements along them. But what could we do as a community or work with some of those property owners or owners of the right-of-ways in order to create a more comprehensive system? The other thing is, is that there was a huge, we recognized a huge need for small-scale improvements throughout the area. And we, and one of the great things about this is that I got a call from Jim Seitz in the Transportation Planning Section and he said, "I need a list of all these things because there's a whole bunch of these things. They're not going to wait for the Benson Plan to be done. They can go in and they have pots of money or funds or they're doing projects in, in those areas already where they can make the improvements right now." So, I think that very likely before the end of the year, we're going to see some, a few of these small-scale improvements already worked on. And, and so, that, that's really great. When we talk about a community of neighborhoods, a lot of, a lot of building a community is sort of in this fuzzy social realm of, how do you create social connections between people that maybe aren't physically connected? Or we know with the increasing diversity, they may not be culturally connected. So, how do we do this? Well, one thing that we can do, all, pretty much all of the recommendations for parks and recreation mirror the recommendations that come from the Parks Plan. People said the same things and want the same things. They want us to improve what we have there and, and make it better and make it more accessible when possible. And then to build some parks and that are going to serve those unserved areas in the central and southern parts of Benson Hill. The other thing we heard is that it's really important that those natural areas that frame the Benson Hill community, it's important that we keep those. Those are great places that people really identify with. So, let's keep those natural areas intact and, and enhance them where possible. People also want to, the police department has a great number of special programs to help businesses and residents, whether it's Neighborhood Watch or to help with crime prevention through environmental design. And so, people want to have a continued relationship with the police. In a lot of, in a lot of circumstances, people weren't necessarily aware of all the things, all the options that were out there for them. So, it's important that we continue to have a good presence there. The other thing is, how do we create a sense of community from a neighborhood or an area that's sort of a collection of neighborhoods in the north and not quite as organized in the south? So, one of the things that we will, that we would like to do is continue the idea of having an advisory committee, like the City Center Community Plan Advisory Board, and to help work on the implementation of the plan and gain some connections from people throughout the area. There's also a lot of things that people talked about that they would like in terms of beautifying the area and bringing some social services to the area. So, there's things that we can do to enhance that sense of community. All of, all of these things are really fleshed out in a number of action strategies. And some of them are, some of them get pretty specific. I, I didn't prepare a long presentation on the action strategies, partly because we still have that third phase of our public participation. On Wednesday, there's going to be a workshop where we're going to have people comment on the action strategy and say what's most important to them of all the actions. And so, we have that workshop planned. We also wanted to have a chance for council to take a look and give us some feedback about, about the action strategies. So, we're starting that Phase Three right now. Our workshop is on Wednesday and if you're available, we'd love to have you join us. The other thing is, is that we are having a contest where we're asking people to submit their ideas for a Benson Plan tagline. So, can you sum up the Benson Hill Plan or just what it's like to live in the Benson Hill in a phrase? And we'll take as many nominations as we can. We'll put some of them back up there to a vote of the people and that will grace our Benson Plan as long as that thing is, is in effect. So, I'm pretty excited about the Benson Plan. It's taken a little longer than we thought it would to do the outreach, but I really feel that we've done a very, a very good job of reaching people who aren't normally reached, just by kind of going by the book of the methods. And I think that we have a, a pretty strong plan that should be well-accepted by the community. I'm open for questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Conklin. That was an excellent report. A lot of hard work went into that. Sounds like you got a great deal of input. I'd like to just ask questions from the council at this point.
Comments? I've had a chance to take a look at the, your, the meeting you had back in February and thank you for posting that on the website, but also at the plan also. You all did put a lot of work into this. Not an easy plan based upon what you had to work with. One of the things that I know about the Benson Hill community is that they're just a group of very special people. We learned that right shortly after the annexation with the outreach that we put forth during that time when we launched our Public Safety Campaign with our stepped-up police services, our fire service, et cetera, and all the wonderful comments that came from the people on the Benson Hill. And so, I, what I've learned from them is that they have graciously, you know, been waiting for the level of service that we've been providing them, coming off of the lack of service they formally got with the county. So, seeing this plan take shape, you know, really gets me excited because I know that they waited a long time for it. And to be able to provide the input to see how this plan is going to unfold is something that I'm sure they're anticipating as well also. And thank you for putting the demographics together too. Those were very important for me to see, how Benson Hill represents 25% of our population, 41% of that population are people of color, 23%, you know, born outside of the US and another 7% of the population, no English in the households. So, the outreach that you'd have to do to engage that community has to, should have presented a challenge. I did have a question. The Benson Hill is unique, I think, from many, many of our other communities in that there's such a large population, densely populated areas of multifamily housing. How did you address getting outreach into those communities? I know that you can do it through the homeowner associations, through some of the areas where there are homeowners, but these dwellings are renters, okay? And so, they're a little bit more transient possibly. And so they're a little bit more transient possibly in terms of moving in and out of the community, and, but yet they represent a pretty good part of the community. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Well, one, one thing that we did is that we worked with some of the apartment managers, and not, not every apartment manager worked with us, but we sent out, we sent out information and flyers, and they allowed us to post there. Also, when we selected members of our steering committee, we made sure that we had members from, of our steering committee who lived in the large, in large multifamily complex. And, and one of the advantages of having a steering committee is that everybody on our steering committee worked really hard to get their friends and neighbors to, to give input on the plan. And so we, so we went about it in a couple of different ways.
And that's important, too, because I know that many people that live in some of our, you know, apartment units probably are, you know, lower income, you know, may not, may have, you know, a number of kids, and of course, that plays into the overall, you know, considerations for what's going to happen there. The other thing that came to mind, and I, I'm glad I saw the community garden there along with the dog park, but was there any discussion about a farmer's market? Because I just think about a farmer's market would just be perfect up there in the Cascade Village area that can attract, you know, a large number of folks, you know, and...
One of the ideas that we tested during, during the last summer was really an idea about having a community marketplace where, similar to a farmer's market idea, but it would be a, you know, every day, year-round, where individual businesses would, would rent spaces and have very small shops. One of the great, one of the great things that services provided by the Cascade Shopping Center is that it's a great place for people who don't have a lot of startup money to have a business storefront, because it doesn't cost a lot to rent a storefront there. And what they've found right now is that all of their small spaces are, are nearly fully rented. So the idea there was, maybe we could have a community marketplace where you took the large grocery store building, split it up into small spaces where people could have specialty groceries or ethnic groceries and create a community marketplace like that. So that idea was, was very well-tested. People loved that idea when we tested it. Unfortunately, the person that Bruce Anderson, the shopping center owner, the person that he had who was going to come and run that business was unable to do it. So, but, you know, Bruce Anderson and his team of associates, they continue to work on different innovative ideas for rehabilitation.
And that was the last thing I was going to mention, too, that, you know, when you look at a community that old with all of the different needs that it has, and a dying core shopping center, one of the things I would think of that would have to be a part of the conversation is economic development, and how do you catalyze some form of economic development? They can do two things. They can create and attract businesses, but also create jobs, living waste jobs in that community also.
Yeah. And there's, it's, you know, there's a whole, there's a whole discussion that could happen just about the Cascade Village Shopping Center. One of the things that we know is that it is kind of a land bank in a way, and the property owner would potentially be willing to sell it to the city. But from a parks perspective, because there's a lot of, there's some power lines, there's some other easements that encumber the property, they would really need the whole piece in order to put a successful community park there. When we tested ideas with the public, people liked the idea of, you know, a portion for parks and maybe some, some newer shops along the side for a little bit of commercial development. And with the changes in the economy, another question to ask is whether or not the shopping center in that location is viable for a major tenant or not, and what kind of, what kind of businesses are likely to locate there and best use the space.
Mr. Corbin?
Yes.
I hate to cut this off, but I know we have another group that wants to present to us that, and I would...
Yeah. That's a good, good reminder.
I would hate to see it.
Thank you, Erica, for elaborating on that for me. I appreciate it.
Any other questions before we wrap it up? Well, okay, I want to thank you. Great briefing. Erica, you and I talked before the meeting about a committee report. This was a briefing only, I noticed, on my agenda, but perhaps, I don't know if you have a draft report, but I think maybe a report that just identifies that we had a briefing would be sufficient. And, and that'll take care of the need to the clerk. And thank you very much for that.
Okay.
Okay. And with that, the next item on our agenda is a special presentation by Howard McCumber. And I gotta pull my agenda back up to get the exact title of the... Howard, I'll let you go ahead and introduce yourself and...
Okay. First of all, introduce people with me. This is David. This is Jim Houghton, whom I've known forever. And Sam Rotabaugh, who I've known about the same period of time. Sam's dad is Sidney Rotabaugh, and he is Jim's partner in what we're trying to do up in the Highlands.
Well, welcome, all of you.
Well, thank you. Now, we have a show-and-tell thing lined up here, and Erica is a wizard compared to what I'm going to do with this. Just right off the bat.
Okay, good.
Okay. Right and left, and we'll do our best. Okay. First of all, as a background, the Growth Management Act, those who can remember back, and I've been in business a long time before it came in, was set up to control growth in the whole state. And in King County, they ran a line from north to south, and everything on the east side was not going to be developed, and everything that was going to be developed was going to be dropped on the west side in the urban area. There was a major problem that I could see about to happen when that happened, and that is there's only so much ground. When that ground, all the ground is developed and gone, then it's going to be very tough building new houses. And the price of ground's going to go up, and the difficulty's going to be, where do you build new houses? Now, the basic law of economics is supply and demand, and money makes the difference. And so if you have only so much supply, usually the money picks it up. That's just bottom line. So that means that when we're in a position like we're in now, which is the same position we're in in 2006, land is a premium. Right now, big chunks of ground, I'd love to get my hands on a few of those, are just, they're not there. So all the housing has to be on smaller chunks. Now, if I'm a builder, I look at a small chunk of ground, my job is to make the most money I can off that chunk of ground. So when I subdivide it, I'm going to sell it, I'm going to get the best, highest prices I can get and build the biggest houses I can build. It's just, just life. So that's what we're going to be doing. There is another problem, and this is the quilt that I'm wearing tonight, and that is we have the Highlands, and we have people on the bottom half of the median income. The people on the top half of the median income have housing, and we're building it again. We're going to have just as many houses as we can tuck in. The building department around here is going to be very busy, things are going to go on, but there'll be no houses built on the lower end unless you folks make it happen. It really is that simple. We have in this town and in this area, a lot of people who are not going to be in housing, and they're the people that you went out and counted on that terrible count that we do annually. And they, that's because there's not enough houses, and there's not enough high-paying jobs, and there's not enough other things. But the basic problem is, if you don't have supply, if you don't have enough housing, it's going to hurt the people on the bottom end. Right now, in our town, we have a lot of doubling up going on, and that is two families living in one house, three families living in an apartment, that sort of thing, and it's going to happen more and more. The alternative is sleeping under the bridge, because there is not enough housing being built. Affordable housing is our problem in this town. We don't have any affordable housing being built today, not in Renton, not for years. I went and talked to Marx Dennis Johnson, and he said, "No, not on the private level. On public, we've had some built," and he names them off, the ones, you know, the Lutheran Church put up the camp, the Compass Center, the Veterans Thing down there across from the high school. That's a wonderful thing. They had to raise $18 million. Everybody came there. I was there, and all sorts of people were there, you know, shaggy heads, but, but that's not that big a, there's not enough units to matter. We have in the Highlands, we have wonderful ideas, and I don't want anybody to slow down on any of those ideas. It improves our society tremendously, but Sunset Terrace is going away. And Sunset Terrace requires a one-for-one exchange. And so we had two duplexes built, and they're lovely duplexes, but it costs $3.5 million to build them. That's $425,000 an apartment. Now, a lot of that went for infrastructure. Still, at that rate, the city, I know what the city has for budget, because I sit on the Budget Committee, and it's just, we don't have enough money for the city to build the low-end housing. You can make a long story real short, but it's going to be built, it's going to be private enterprise that builds it. It's going to be private builders who are going to build the housing that's needed on the lower end. No one else is doing it, no one else can do it, and the only way that can happen is with mutual cooperation, working out things so that we can work together and make it happen. This is very important, and the need for it is tremendous. Now, some people don't like the Growth Management Act, to tell the truth. Never been, yeah, exactly. Never been a great fan of the Growth Management, but it's here, and we have to live with it. And one of the things that goes on with it, this is my little thing on that, is that, well, we'll get that, is that in order for it to be built, in order for it to be built, you're going to have to help it. The other part is, we need to have, this is back on the Highlands, and this is back in Sunset area, we need to stabilize what we're doing. Now, we're pouring a lot of money in, which I'm delighted. We have a library that I'm anxious for, and we've all been looking for, and a lot of other things. We've been, I've been on two Highland Task Forces. Terry and I, she headed the one, the last one we had. Great ideas, and some of those ideas are happening. Terry was one who's pushing on the school, working with the city, getting a thing working together, and that has been, it's happening right now. This is wonderful stuff. So we're doing the thing, but one of the things we need to, to make this work is owner occupation, owner occupants of the property. This means we've got to build housing cheap enough for people to be able to buy it and have it available for them. And so that is my, my major focus today. Okay, the government, Mark Groper's doing a great job. Mark Groper, personally, I've met with him a lot because we've worked together, and he is absolutely sincere, but the group that he deals with are not the group I'm dealing with. I, there's three sectors. I should use this PowerPoint, but I'm not exactly sure now to get it. Oh, there we are. How's that, right there? There's three sets. There's the 50 to 80% of the area median income, that's the countywide median income. They should have 16% of the new houses being built should be designed for these folks. That gives them enough. 30 to 50% of that, you take 12%, and the bottom is, is another 12%. Now, these bottom, at the present time, I don't know how to, how to treat their, their situation. Right now, they're on public housing, and we're overstocked. We, we have a waiting list, it's terrible we get into this stuff. However, the more units we build, the more supply we have, the better off we are. So the more affordable units we can build, the better, period. In other words, 40% of all new housing should be affordable. Of all the housing built, that really is, in order, because we have an increasing population, 40% ought to be for that group. And it's not. We're not doing it at all. Okay. These are some of the things that we have, and I've sent them off to you so you all have a chance to look at them. These are the things, the Growth Management Act and the countywide planning and the housing thing that we've done on the city, they all say the same thing. We all believe, we all talk the talk, and the talk is, we need more affordable housing. Now, it's walking the walk. I did a check, and we had 21 projects up until January this year, for the last two years. 20% of those proposed were for more than affordable housing. There's only one proposed for affordable housing. That's what I'm going to talk about. And basically, like I say, there isn't much. I sit on Reach, and the guy who handles Reach, we've been, he keeps us informed of how we are, and I went down to Reach's headquarters, which is downtown Renton, up north of Seventh. They only built six units, six townhouse units last year. They have three coming up, they have five next year. That's wonderful. And listen, I'd love to have it five times, but it's not enough. I checked out, and we have 18 single-family residences that were demolished during the same time. We may have had more than that, but 18 that I could identify off the demolished list. So we're falling behind. We're demolishing more units than we're building. Okay. Now, the reason we need to have owner-occupied situation is because it stabilizes and improves our thing. The amount of money we throw at it does not necessarily stabilize an area. What stabilizes an area are the people who live there. And the people who live there who have an ownership position, who have skin in the game, who are, who care, this is their home. That's the thing that stabilizes an area. And so we're trying to make a start on that. Okay. This is possible, it can be done. It's a win-win for everybody if we do it. Okay. Now, I'm going to show, these are some pictures of our area. This isn't the Sunset, this is on Kirkland. You probably know them when you see them, and you'll know that they've been widely improved. And the reason they're improved is because somebody lives there now. Do you remember this house? This is an awful place. A fellow who had a very thick Russian accent lived in it before, and he had, it was clear across, the hedge came clear across, you couldn't see in very well, but if you went in past the hedge, it was awful. He was in trouble, and he was a very good man, he tried, shedded a bunch. But someone else bought it, and you can tell from looking at it, it wasn't set up as a rental. This is another, a little place in the front, that's a duplex, big ones in the back. This is some of our infill that we had up there, right close, in the Sunset area. These little houses are lovely. You probably recognize that one right across the street from the junior high school. I have three sons-in-law who attended that junior high school.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Howard, could you clarify, are these examples of what some affordable housing could look like?
Yes, it is, and I got, matter of fact, what we did on that, let me see if I can go there. I've been working with Chip for a couple, three years on this thing, and he came up with it. We have some plants and some things that you required in the Sunset area to make it look good, and Jill Sousa, who's a really fine architect that he put us with, set up these. These are the basic drawings. This is what they'll look like. They're very simple houses, but they're nice, they work, and we can build them affordably. So these can be built, and they're nice.
Howard, what do you, what price range are you talking when you're talking?
Okay. Price range has got to be 350s pushing it, I think 300,000 less. 300,000 less, we can do it, given the interest rates the way they are now. So it's just kind of, we have to strike while the iron is hot. But right now, we could do this affordably, and someone could get into this and qualify for it, who is at the 80% of the median income. And we've got a bank ready to go, I've got all that stuff. This is very doable.
Howard, I have a question. I forget, were you on the committee that, that made the zoning recommendations? I think Ms. Byer was on it.
Yeah, I was there.
One thing I'm curious about, I've always wondered, that committee pretty much ruled out single-family in the, what's currently duplex zone.
No, they didn't.
Oh, they didn't?
We did not, no. What we did is we ruled out huge complexes on, north of 12th.
Okay.
We kept it smaller. We had 18 units per acre max, and that's if you had specialist stuff, mostly it's 14. You get four more if you got, if you did affordable housing or something, yeah. 18 is the max.
Okay, so you could still have single-family houses for sale on there.
We do, and we would, and that was part of the thing. We wanted to have this less dense up here. This is, keep it in kind of the area it is. What we're trying to do, among other things, is keep the people who are there there, make it so that they're not, that they're not taken out of the picture. That's so important. The only affordable housing we have that's really affordable is the present stock. The stuff we already have is where you can rent it out so that people can afford to live there. That's just important.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Howard, what is the median priced, home price in that area?
Median home price in that area, it's, well, depends on what we're looking at for homes, to tell the truth. I know that sounds, we've got duplexes. Right now, they're old stuff. The old stuff we have has gone down. There aren't very many on the market. No one's selling their duplex unless they have to, because we've dropped in value. I was selling those for over $300,000, and right now, they're all fire sales. But when it comes back, the big question is... But when it comes back, the big question is, what can I build one for and sell it? But what we're looking for is more stock. What we're looking for is more stuff to put in.
So, maybe I could reframe the question. The housing stock that's currently being built that you categorize as non-affordable housing, what, what's the price point for those units?
I'd say that's anything from 350 up. I'd say 400 and 450, $500,000. And the smallest stuff we have going in are like $400,000 projects. I think I've got pictures of those here. Let me get to her. Okay, that's the, our little project. That's the big lot that it's on. You can see the corner of the duplex. There's a lot of ground there. We can tuck three houses in there, no problem. That's people who don't have one. Okay, let me just run down here. Okay. These are the, these are the ones we're talking about. Okay, there's, that's a set, that's new. This is new. This is Bill Hughes's outfit down on Edmunds. Those are all new houses. Those all run about $600,000. They're great. There's no curb gutter or sidewalk. None was required. That's another set, they're same thing. This is over by Duval, and it's the same thing. This is across the street on that, same thing. It's okay. It works. It works for those folks fine, but they're not required to build it. There's one that runs between Field Street and the street on past. And I know I'm taking up my time, and so, get through with this in a hurry. But that's our little project. This is our, our little project right here. That's the sidewalk that currently is there. That's a fairly newer sidewalk, and that's the sidewalk going the other way. Sidewalks can be part of our situation. We got three obstacles that are stopping building affordable housing in this area. Let me get right here. Probably back on this one. Number one is the city fees. What, anything that, that makes it too expensive to build stops it from being affordable housing, stops us from building it and selling it for $300,000. So, that's, that's the bottom line. So, we have city fees. We're waiving those, that you folks will waive their city fees for Mark's project, 18 units next door. You could waive it. I could waive it, by the way, when I went to market. Sam was Johnson, he said, "Hey, listen, if you could put 10 units on there, we can waive it right now. We're not worried about affordability. Just owner occupant, if it's owner occupants, 10 units, we got it." And I said, "Well..." What I want to do, and this is what I'm asking for, is to be, the value being that it's affordable housing, then you waive the fees because it's affordable housing. It's been brought up to me, and one of the things we've been talking about real quickly is that we'll get some language up so that once it's in a, when it, before it comes on, on the title, we'll have, this has to be an affordable owner-occupied house. And that will have the legal eagles work out this thing. But that becomes the situation so we don't have someone buy the house and then turn it into a rental. Not doing that. We have owner occupant, and that's what we're keeping it in. So, because it's solving the problem. If for some reason they did, they'd have to pay the money back, you know? Whatever the fees were, they'd have to pay them back, if that was the case. The next one is the complete streets. The complete streets are very, very expensive, and the problem is, we can't build a chunk of complete street, makes no sense, until the whole street's built. When the whole street's built, and that's okay. We could dedicate the ground right now. We can dedicate that, and then we'd like to work out an LID or something so that down the road, when it comes on, we can participate. We feel there'll be some grant money and some other incentives that'll come along. We can participate in that when it goes. I know that's quick on that. We'll have this little clause there that I mentioned before, that suitable legal language will make sure that it's only owner-occupied for people who have affordable housing and can do it. Thank you for your time. I didn't get on my stuff, but it really doesn't matter. I think you've got the flavor. Any questions?
Well, first of all, Howard, thank you for coming, and we all appreciate the, the energy you put into our community. One of the, one of the thoughts I have is that, and you don't have to answer this tonight, but I've, I've heard it said that, that it's, it's always going to be hard to build affordable housing, that there's a lot of people that advocate, we just need to open up more land to housing, and then people will build the high-end housing, and then that'll open, that'll increase the housing stock so that people don't have to pay $250,000 for a little 800-square-foot, you know, cinder block house anymore. That is to say that as everybody kind of moves up, the, the lower-end houses that already exist become more affordable. So, you know, that's one thing I always wonder when, whether we could ever do it. I mean, do you really think you can build brand-new affordable single-family houses?
That's what I'm doing. That's, that's my, that's, that's my goal, is to build them cheap, build them inexpensively, build them according to oil with the right kind of architect, but build them very viable homes that'll work. But I can't do it with all the fees. I've got to have the city's help. I won't be asking for any dimes out of your cash budget. You don't have any in your cash budget. And the rest of it, we can work out. We have great staff, we have absolute confidence in them, but I want to give them enough authority that they can go ahead and help us with it. And, and we go for it.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you. Any questions for Howard? I've just got a couple.
Not a question, but a comment. And I just want to thank you, Howard, for recognizing the need for affordable housing. And I also want to thank you for attending that meeting last week also that has to do with homeless people, and your interest in trying to help this city become all that it